Good evening and welcome to Saratoga Springs Planning Commission. Tonight is January 25th, and we would like to start with a pledge of allegiance. We've asked Scott Carlson if he would lead us.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you, and let's start with roll call.
We'll start with Commissioner Steele. Roll call, Chris.
(inaudible)
Brian Chapman?
Kirk Wilkins?
Ken Kilgore?
Troy Cunningham?
And city staff?
(inaudible)
Evan Thurman?
Gordon Minor?
(inaudible) Shepard, sorry.
Eric Carroll?
David Stroud.
All right, great, and we have a quorum. This is a public meeting, so we've set aside some time for public comment. If there are anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and discuss things that are not on the agenda tonight, please keep your comments to about three minutes, and we'll open up public comment at this time. Okay, it says we'll close public comment, and we move on to item number four. This is a public hearing. It's a rezone from neighborhood commercial and agriculture to community commercial for the point at Saratoga Springs and a concept plan review located approximately 1186 North Redwood Road, Roma Development LLC, Marion Hill is the applicant. I will turn the time over to Sarah Carroll, who is our senior planner for the presentation.
All right, so the property currently has two zones on it, agriculture and, I've forgotten, neighborhood commercial? I forgot what purpose. Anyhow, it currently has two zones on it, and they're requesting the community commercial zone, which is consistent with our land use element of our general plan. Just to give you some background, a few years ago, before we had the community commercial zone, this property was presented and requested for regional commercial, and that had a conditional approval subject to them entering into a development agreement and limiting some of the uses and then maintaining the landscaping out front. And with the community commercial zoning request, we don't need to limit any of the uses because that's what the zone is intended to do, be next to communities. And then another thing you'll see in the staff report is there's a small piece of property in front that was dedicated with a previous plot that we would like to trade long-term maintenance, or we're suggesting that we could trade long-term maintenance and deed that back to them. They would then own it and maintain it long-term, and the city wouldn't have to do that. And that's the trail and landscaping in front of the property, and then it could also count towards their landscape requirement. As far as the concept plan goes, those three buildings shown, and there's been indication that another building would be proposed in the future, and that that would possibly be a medical office building. Based on everything that you're seeing here, there are two remnant parcels that were left out. They were, they're under the same ownership, and they're under contract with the current buyer, who's the applicant, but they weren't included in the concept plan. So those will need to be added. It won't change the plan a lot. It'll make the, it'll shift the drive-by all over, which will be a better site layout, and then it'll allow them to meet their landscaping requirement as well if we don't end up trading the front. Either way, it'll allow them to be over if they have it. There was, they, we would like to know the square footage of the future building, at least the max, so we can count the parking and make sure it's going to be adequate. They don't want to build the parking lot in phases, which makes sense as far as having unfinished edges and storm runoff and things like that. So they do want to build the entire parking lot at one time. However, we would need to know an anticipated size of the future building. And then some other comments, there needs to be five feet between buildings and asphalt, except at drive-up windows, and they need to address that comment. And the additional property on the north will help them meet that requirement as well, so they'll still be able to have the buildings that are shown. As far as the landscape plan, there's several comments on the conceptual landscape plan. They will need fencing on the east property line because that's a bedding residential development. They will need to add two trees to each large landscape island. There are some that don't, and it's because there were lights shown in those. However, it's still a code requirement, so they'll have to position the lights in the trees so that both code requirements can be met. And then they'll need one small tree, or one tree for the small landscape islands, and they'll need a buffer around the parking. So wherever parking is next to a property line, they'll need 10 feet. So they'll have to add that to the east and the north property lines. This plan is slightly short on landscaping, and as I've mentioned, they can meet that in several ways by adding the entire property under their ownership to the plan, and then the city might also deed a large park strip area in front. That would be subject to city council approval. Here are the proposed elevations. They're all similar except for the color scheme, and then two of them have a drive-up window and one does not. And then these are, this is a list of the conceptual plan recommendations that we covered, and then a few more. And also, the planning review checklist has several items that they'll need to address and submit with their site plan application. And then there is a recommended motion for approval of the rezone to community commercial.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Is the applicant here? Hi there, would you like to come join us?
Sure.
If you could state your name and your address for the record. You can have a seat right here, just make sure the microphone's on.
Marlin Hill.
Hey, Marlin. Did you have anything you wanted to add to the presentation tonight?
No, we're working on all the items that she mentioned, and they should be brought in sometime tomorrow or Monday. All in address.
Okay, great. Then we'll go ahead and open up public comment for item number four at this time. If you have any comments, please come forward and state your name and address for the record for item number four. That was easy. We'll go ahead and close public comment at this time and open it up to the planning commission for comment. I got the look. Commissioner Steele. She won.
I would like to do a little more explanation. You are aware that medical offices require five parking spaces per thousand?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure, because the last time it was, I saw it, it was parked for less than that with a building. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Yeah, no, I do, I do. So the corner building doesn't have a drive-through on it for office and medical. There might be a very light retail that partners in the group occupy. A portion of that, that will be a medical use, it's a dental office. We do have a group looking in the back for, this is future, for medical use, but the other two buildings will have approximately 10 per thousand parking ratio to cover any type of uses that, so they'll be heavily parked.
Okay, and so you're saying the southernmost building will be the one that is used for medical off, dental?
Mostly, yeah. It might have a slight, light retail use, but the partner is a dentist. He wants to keep it more professional dental office type use. So he has tinkered with taking the whole building, so he'd bring orthodontics in as well, but we haven't come to that stage yet. But I know he's taking it at least 3,000 feet.
Okay, well, my comment may not be, if that happens and there's no retail there, then this may not apply. But for pedestrian connectivity, we have in our code, "safe pedestrian connection shall be made between buildings within a development to any streets adjacent to the property, to any pedestrian facilities that connect the property when feasible between developments and from buildings to the public sidewalk to minimize the need to walk from within the parking lot among cars." Well, part of that is going out to Redwood Road. And right now, you can say, "Well, nobody's going to walk that far." You know, there's no pedestrian. Thinking the lifespan of your building, which will probably, we could safely say, 30 years, we might actually have a bus line. And so if we want to get people in to a retail, it would be nice to have a sidewalk to that southern, from Redwood Road to the building. And that's just-
I believe there is a, are you talking about the southern building where this cutout is? Is that where you're talking? From the building to the street?
Yeah, yes.
There is, I believe that is a sidewalk out in front.
There's a sidewalk to the parking lot, but there's, it doesn't seem to be one from the building to Redwood Road. Looks like, and the elevations have doors there, but I don't-
Well, the doors are, so the back doors are generally for fire escape and things like that, so if that's the ones that you're talking in the back of the building, that's what they're for.
Well, they look like glass doors.
They are.
And so somebody's going, may try to get in those doors. And if it's for access, for access, then you still need at least a way for a wheelchair to get out and around.
There should be sidewalk in the back.
Well, I agree, there should be.
I think there is. Is there? Well, okay, so-
It's a comment I've given in the, I've given you that comment, so hopefully your-
Okay, we'll address that.
Our designers are working on that.
Sarah, is that the concept plan recommendation number eight, where it says add pedestrian connectivity? Is this part of that?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, I know what you're, okay, yeah. So you're looking for a sidewalk along the backside of the building? Yeah, that's normal.
Thank you.
Really? Okay. So in general, is the applicant okay with the planning staff's concept plan recommendations?
Yes.
Perfect. If the, so if the city does not deed the trail, then what are you planning to do? Do you have a plan in place yet?
Yeah, I mean, we've got some additional areas that we could landscape if necessary, so.
I guess that all comes up in the, planter, shrub, oh, is the, oh, this is a question to staff. I thought weed barriers are no longer required by city code.
They're not required.
Okay. Like, I thought this was the requirement, but... There's a, under planter, shrub beds, we have here, planting and shrub beds shall have high-quality weed barrier or pre-emergent. Now, turns out the applicant is doing that, so that's not an issue, but is that something that we're requiring, or shouldn't, the reason I ask is eventually this will be an administrative action, and if we're requiring it that way, then I don't want it to be a conflict.
They could do either, and their plan, they put that on their plan without any direction from us to do so.
Okay. Yeah, okay, well, if it's not a direction, then why do we write on here, "Complies"? What do you mean? Under planter shrub beds, under the checklist, we say that weed barriers shall have high-quality weed barrier.
Oh, I can change the checklist.
Okay. And, and the applicant comply with the 20% landscaping requirement and also add six more trees as requested?
Yeah, and I believe we're, like I said, we are going to address that, and we'll address the sidewalk as well.
Great, thanks. Is that for me? Commissioner Cunningham, did you have some questions?
I was just confused on, just after the map, I can't really see a page number, where it says, "Application review checklist," it says, "Type of action, administrative?" This legislative?
This is legislative.
I was just wondering why it said administrative?
So, the rezone is legislative, however, when you see the site plan, it will be administrative.
So this is kind of for later, then?
Right, so the checklist is directed towards the site layout rather than the zone change?
All right. Where the drive-throughs are, is there going to be like any kind of berm or anything between?
There can be, but we haven't given them that comment, but we can give that comment.
Well, I was just wondering, the aesthetics of driving down Redwood Road and looking over and seeing a drive-through, I don't know, I just, I think the buildings look nice. I just don't like the idea of the drive-throughs.
It's kind of hard if you're going to put them back against the street, or they're usually the other way around, but the way that the buildings are designed, they're the other opposite direction, so the entryway's coming off the park.
Right.
So it's a kind of a city walkway.
I do like that the parking is away from the street, and the buildings are closer to the street. I like that.
Well, you could, I mean, if you want to address the drive-through in somewhat form, you could do some, we could do some bushes along that backside to kind of maybe-
The only thing I'm thinking is in the evening when somebody's driving through, the lights hitting the cars, anyway.
They normally, I think they would pretty much, due to the long distance there, most of the stacking would be on the back, so it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be sitting on the, I think you're seeing where the entryway is. Usually it takes eight, nine cars from drive-through back, and you're probably going to be in the very corner.
They would come in and then have to go around-
They'd come in and go around, but they wouldn't be sitting, I don't believe, on the northern end of the parcel. They'd actually come around.
But still, for that one stretch, the lights would be going into the-
That's the same as coming out of the property, it's this, you know, and coming out on the street, those would be-
Well, that's true.
That's just probably more because people would be sitting in that to make turns right or left. I think this, you know, the stacking is usually about eight to 10 cars stacking from the drive-through pickup window, so most of them will make the turn and sit and wait.
All right, thanks, that's all I had.
I was just going to point out to the planning commission, I hope, I don't want you to, I mean, we want to make the best use of your time as possible. You're kind of getting into some of the site plan issues that you'll look at later down the road. Right now, this is just a recommendation based on the rezone and the criteria that's listed there. It's very, very basic, talks about compliance with the general plan and some of the broader policy goals of the general plan, and also rezoning ordinance. So I'd hate for you to have to go through this again in a month or two, and they bring the site plan for approval.
My question is directed directly at that. So normally, when we do a rezone, we have, we tie it to a plot, or is it written currently in a way that if he decides to do some other kind of construction on the site, that the rezone falls back?
Well, I think you want to look at the general plan, and I, look at the, I'm assuming that this is, the land use in here that's being proposed is consistent with the general plan.
That's fine, I was just wondering-
Typically, just, we don't like to do conditional rezones if we can help it.
Is there a reason for that?
As best as to look at the broader policies of the general plan, and if it's, if the rezone is consistent with that, then that makes the most sense, and then they can, they have the entitlement under the zoning ordinance in place. That makes sense.
Any other comments before I wrap it up? Okay, just wanted to thank you for your compliance and your attitude in complying with the concept plan recommendations and working with the city. So you're not done just yet, we have, we have to do a little something here. But I'll entertain a motion.
I move forward, a positive recommendation to the city council for a rezone from neighborhood commercial and agricultural to community commercial for approximately 3.91 acres located at approximately 1186 North Redwood Road with the findings and conditions below.
We have a motion from Commissioner Chapman, we have a second. Second. A second from Commissioner Christensen, or sorry, Cunningham, excuse me. Any questions to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your time. Sorry about that, Commissioner Cunningham. I owe you one. All right, let's move on to, I have two. Let's move on to item number five. This is a public hearing, community and village plan for the Alpine School District, Saratoga Springs Middle School, located at the northwest corner of Tanner Lane and Redwood Road. Frank Pulley is the applicant, and this is presented by Planning Director Dave Stroud. We'll turn the time over to Dave.
Correct, this is the Alpine School District. They've obviously had a need for some time for another school facility, and probably more than this one, but this time they're ready to go forward with a middle school. The property you see here on the map, outlined in the blue is where it's located, they're just on the west side of Redwood Road, just north of Tanner Lane. The adjacent uses are residential, a church, cross Redwood Road, single-family residential also, and of course, the PC zone with the range of the property. The school is looking at buying a portion of that lot you see there, and so they'll have to go through the subdivision process also. But the adjacent uses, residential and a church. Just some of the projects, so we share what's going on. Of course, this is governed by the DAP, district area plan and the PC zone requirements. Of course, in the PC zone, the SLR has been granted 16,000 units, 10 million square feet of non-residential. Again, those are some basic things that we've gone through before. The neighborhood where it's located is the traditional neighborhood type, and that type identifies types of open space that are to go there. So the school is looking at 30.34 acres total, of which 26 would then be the net for the school site. They propose a 186,000 square foot, two-story school facility. That would then equal 86 equivalent residential units, which measures the impact on the city and other utilities. That's the total open space, including the school fields and the trail and 30-foot area along Redwood Road, a total of 13 and a half acres. Three access points to be provided by Redwood Road and Tanner Lane, Redwood Road and Parkway Boulevard, and then Old Farm Road. They estimate this will bring actually 50 full-time jobs, which is a good thing. 309 off-street parking stalls are proposed, which will be accessible stalls. There will be an eight-foot meandering urban trail, is what's classified along Redwood Road. The trail's master plan recommends 12. Right now, the existing trail south of this along Redwood Road is an eight-foot meandering concrete. They're welcome, they have agreed to in their plan to comply with the signage requirements that we have, which for monuments, 77 feet high and 45 square feet. The sign they are proposing is five feet high and 23 square feet of sign area. Because this is a school district, we are somewhat limited to the requirements that we can't place on them, but because this is under SLR property right now, they are required to go through the community plan and village plan process. This is the elevation of the school you see here. The conceptual plan, of course, those identify with school sits, parking lots, landscaping, the playfields, whatnot. And the landscape plan, of course, landscaping around the building itself, the playfields in the middle there, the one green, and the lighter green on the right along Redwood Road, that would be part of the public open space as well, along with the trail. And the planting plan you see on the right. And so staff recommendations approval with the findings and conditions you see here.
Thank you, Dave. Is the applicant here? Hi there, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Frank Pulley, 490 North State Street, Linden, Utah.
Frank, did you want to add anything to the presentation tonight?
No.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so we will open up public comment for item number five, community and village plan for the Alpine School District. Okay, given that there isn't any public comment, we'll close public comment, and we will, before we open this up to the planning commission, Dave, you mentioned that we have limited ability in what we are able to discuss. Could you briefly go over that for the public and for our sake as we make-
Actually, let me turn it over, Kevin, because any attorney will expound on that better than I can.
Okay, so I'll try to get it all, there's, I'll probably miss some, so correct me, Dave, if I missed something. So the city, okay, so yes, it's true that this is part of the district area plan, but that's just the same as any type of zoning regulation, and this is, you know, applicant is a school district. The Utah code restricts our ability to impose any requirements that are related to aesthetics, fencing, landscaping, those types of requirements, location of the school, so we can't say, you know, schools can't be in an industrial zone or residential zone. They can basically put it where they want to or need to. So anyway, that's basically it. And then there's some restrictions on certain types of impact fees under special circumstances.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, we'll open-
So I guess I should, maybe I should have clarified aesthetics, meaning like architectural requirements and things like that, design and so forth, yeah.
Design, right. Thank you. We'll open this up to the planning commission for comment.
Charlie's first this time.
Okay. Well, I, the only thing I wanted to say was, I was interested why we had a village plan, so Dave answered that.
I guess I should probably expound on that. Typically, you see community plan and a village plan, where the community plan looks at a broader area, when individual development parcels come in as a village plan. Because the school is not interested in, they're not the business of developing things beyond their school boundaries, it made no sense to have two separate plans because all we're looking at is just this one parcel itself, so they've been combined.
And then, did I catch it correctly, that the school will maintain the trail in front, or is that, did I miss that?
I believe, yes, they'll maintain, I'll look it up here, I believe that language is in my report here.
I think that's great, that they're willing to do that. And then my other question is the roads, is that going to be part of the greater development, or how do the-
The roads?
The roads are going to go around the school.
Yeah, they will, they'll install, Gordon, the exact dimensions, about a half width, and Kerbin gutter on the far side.
It wouldn't necessarily be half width, it would be the full width with the kerbin gutter on the other side.
That's something that's part of the development from the school, or is the developer in general going to do that?
No, the school, that will be part of the development.
All right, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kilgore.
So in the calculation of the ERUs, it sounds like there's a different, there are two methods. One that the applicant proposes in calculating the ERUs, and the one that the district area plan calculates or uses. And so I was just wondering, is that an issue, and is there a consequence?
Yeah, well, the only real consequence as far as the zoning and the use of the property goes is how many ERUs come off the ground, total of the entire PC zone. Obviously, I think it's 86 ERUs, it's not going to, you know, really make a dent in the thousands that are approved now. There are different ERU calculations that engineering uses as far as impact directly on utility systems. But because the DAP says we have to calculate non-residential uses as, there are 2,165 square feet is one ERU. So that's the ERU calculation we would use, and that's what we use to track, you know, over the next 30, 40 years as we develop and school in the PC zone, we'll use these, whatever we have on school, their ERUs, we'll take that off the grand total. So at some point, the PC is going to be maxed out on ERUs, but we have to go by what's in the DAP.
Okay, so, yeah, that was my question, because I really don't, I mean, I'm not really too concerned, since it sounds like water issues and all that's taken care of, but, or at least has been considered. But, you know, we always hear that the city code can be overridden by a DAP. In this case, we have a method, a calculation method in the DAP, and then the applicant has a different one. So as a planning commission, which one should we, you know, do we need to make that kind of-
And my recommendation says use the DAP calculation for ERU.
I saw that, yeah.
No, don't be confused with the, so we actually don't have ERUs for water. They're called equivalent residential connections, and that's based off of our water impact fee, which is completely separate than Title 19, and how we determine ERUs for density purposes and zoning purposes. So they're just two completely separate and different things. And the seven, the calculation of the 17.5 refers to impact fees, and the Alpine School District will only have to pay for 17.5 if, assuming that that calculation is correct, 17.5 ERCs. The 86, or whatever it is, under the DAP- Um, the eighty-six or whatever it is under the DAP, that's, that's what they're governed by as far as density for zoning purposes.
Okay, so, is it, so is the applicant okay that we're going with the DAP calculation instead of your, instead of yours?
Yeah, yeah, we're fine.
Good. Is the applicant able and willing to meet the conditions in the city engineer's report? Are some conditions in there that they request?
Um, as far as mine are, I haven't seen the, the full report from the engineer yet, so.
So, excuse me, I can, I can add to that. There, there are only three simple conditions and, uh, when it comes to, uh, a motion, uh, I'd like to add a word to one of the conditions, just to clarify. One of the conditions says entire area under the community plan, including the streets, is subject to discharge restrictions. That should say stormwater discharge restrictions. Um, so there are only, only three conditions there.
Stormwater discharge restrictions?
Yes.
Which condition do you have that under?
Um, well, in my report, I, I don't know how it reads in the planning report, but in my report, it was, it was the first one of the conditions.
Or, or says the maximum allowable ERU shall be calculated as described by, uh, City Center DAP. Yes, it says all the requirements that the city engineer should be met, does that satisfy your-
That, that's in my report, Gordon has, you had your own report.
Yeah. Does the engineer report get moved into yours, or, or is it just a global statement about mine?
It should have been a separate report. Uh, my, my, my condition kinda covers everything that's being asked by the city engineer.
Right, so the city, the city engineer's report then has to be in the, in the conditions? Because it sounds like it has to be edited. By what he just said, yeah, by what Gordon just said.
Yeah, and if Kevin thinks, yeah, if that, Gordon, could you, could you just tell us-
I think, I think it's clear what the intent of that condition is and Gordon can correct that for the engineering report with the city council.
Okay. So we don't need to make a, a special, it's a separate condition?
I think it's clear what he said.
See, uh, I was just wondering, so I know we can't say, uh, we don't have control over where the middle school is located, but just wondering, why is the middle school being located, uh, in this location? Do we know, it's so close, since it's pretty close to Vista Heights?
Yeah, just, that'd be, that'd be the applicant, why, why this school district has chosen this location.
Okay.
Um, one of the biggest reasons, just being able to find, you know, property large enough to, to be able to place a, a middle school, typically we like to see, you know, twenty-five to thirty acres and this is just the, the place where, you know, our business services department was able to find, you know, the property to be able to, to put the middle school on.
Okay. Um, and then, last thing I have is your architectural drawings. There was a, uh, a metal roof access ladder showing in the, it was, uh, listed as item five oh four point zero, it's a metal roof access ladder. That's gonna, is that, uh, hidden from view, uh, from the ground view, we're looking at it? Can't really tell from the elevations.
And as far as that goes, that may go into the architectural requirement, we can require that of a school. To, to, Kevin can correct me, but that, I think that falls into architecture. If they can hide it, great, if they wanna do that, I'd say more power to them, but I don't think that's something we can require of them.
Yeah, I concur.
Okay.
Can you do it as far as health and safety?
Yeah.
No. That's up to them. Yeah. I mean, you, you can make the suggestion and, but that's really up to them.
Okay, that's it for me, thanks.
Okay, um, I understand that we can't require any more than they have offered, but they have in here, um, that, um, under the guiding principles, it's the school district's goal to integrate with local surroundings and keep in harmony with the standards set forth by the city of Saratoga Springs. And I had the same concern about the, um, ladder, outdoor ladder, and I've laughed, we had a son, uh, we have a son who, uh, lived in Southern California and he got to come to Oregon and live with us because they found him on top of the school roof. And so it is a, a little bit of a safety issue and even if we can't require it, I think it would be prudent for them to, uh, have it interior or have it locked off in some way, it would look better if it was interior. Now then, I'll go on to my other questions. One of them is just a general question and I keep forgetting to ask it. Why is Redwood on some, Redwood Road on some maps and notifications and Westlake Road on GPS cell phones and tablets, which is correct? Does anybody know?
On some, you say it's called Westlake?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm sure there is, there's, um, I don't know where it changes or why, but-
It shows on all the maps and, and, uh, anytime I, people have asked me at, at my house, you know, why, and I don't understand and I didn't know that it had changed, so anyway. Um, will the entire school site be fenced?
Yes, except for out in front of the school. If you're familiar with Vista Heights, it'll be a similar, um-
I'm not.
Not familiar with Vista Heights, so our back playing fields and stuff will be, will be fenced.
Okay. Uh, will the, uh, when you get neighbors that may be residential neighbors, will they be able to access that and is the church counting that as part of their open space?
I don't, I'm not aware of churches counting as their open space. We typically, um, try not to put too many openings in our, in our fence that access into the playing fields just for the safety of the kids while school's in session, but they will be accessible from where our parking and stuff is, so if community wants to come after school hours to, to use the fields, which they do a lot, um, we ask them just to park in our parking lot and access the fields that way.
And what's the parking that is gated off, that's in the rear of the school?
Most of that's just a service entrance where we maintain the, the fire loop.
It's got a lot of parking back there too, what, ten, fifteen, probably?
Yeah, so mainly for, you know, some of it's our, you know, maintenance staff and kitchen staff that their services are in the back and, and there'll be maybe some, a little bit of faculty parking, but, but very minimal.
Okay, and, um, is all, or how many of your ADA spaces have you planned to be van accessible?
You know, we just follow what the ADA code and that requires to, to make that, I haven't walked through and, and counted them, but whatever the code requires, we'll make sure that they're, that they're there.
I will hold you to that. And, um, is your mechanical equipment going to be screened from view?
Yeah, if I can answer that, the ladder that you were seeing in the elevation view, that is actually a mechanical penthouse that's up on top of the, the school. So those are, those are all screened indoor, they're actually kind of mechanical rooms on, on top of the roof. And that, that mech, that ladder that you see is actually to get on top of that mechanical penthouse that's up on top of the school.
Is it exposed where you see it?
We can certainly take a look and make sure that it is aesthetically pleasing, so it's, um, we, we want our schools to look nice and to make sure they look nice in the neighborhood, so, um, I can certainly have an architect look at it to make sure that it's, it looks nice.
We have in the past required that they be interior and, uh, or, you know, so kids can't get up on the roof and up to your mechanical equipment.
Yeah, so this being a two-story school, so that mechanical penthouse is up on top of the two-story school, so there's no way for kids to-
Well, they can't, they can't get, get to the ladder and get up there?
No, no, it's on top of, the ladder's actually on top of the school where the mechanical penthouse is, so-
Okay, I see.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if you had a really tall ladder, you could get up on the school, but yeah, it's where it's located.
Okay, and in other words, it, from the ground level to, there is-
No, that, that's all interior, to be able to access the roof and stuff is all inside.
That answered that question. And then, um, I noticed that you have, um, a wrought iron gate on your garbage surrounds. Again, we, as a city, have required, um, and would ask you nicely if you would make that a solid gate. It just, it, it looks better, it keeps garbage from flying out.
Certainly happy to take that into consideration, yeah, understand your concern there for sure.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
I do have a couple, couple more questions, um, mainly in reference to the transportation plan, and it says on here, you know, it's all in harmony with our, our transportation master plan, but what I wanted to know was this Tanner Lane, it says it won't be a major intersection for the school, but will people still be able to access the school and drop off in this direction, or how are you gonna get people to use Parkway Boulevard to kinda create the flow for drop off?
Yeah, they'll still be able to access through Tanner Lane, but at Parkway Boulevard, U.D.O. has planned for a, a traffic signal there, so that, our intent is that would encourage people to use that intersection because there's a traffic signal.
Tanner Lane, so we would hope people drive up to Parkway Boulevard if they're coming from the south end of the city?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, my other question was, you had a couple bullet points on the traffic study, can we see that? Is that something we can look at, just out of curiosity?
Traffic study, we have provided it to, to city staff.
Okay, can we get a copy of it, maybe? I don't see it in our packet.
Yeah, we, we can get that to you.
Okay. And my last question was same, kind of similar to Commissioner Steele's with those parking spots in the back, is this gonna be a one-way street to access those, or how will you kinda signify that?
Yeah, it's just, it's really only for staff, usually that's, um, kinda closed off, besides for staff, yeah, it is kinda just a, it's a minimal road to, to meet the fire line requirements to go around.
Okay. I was just hoping to make sure that people trying to use the tennis courts don't come back and park there, you know, but those are all my questions.
Thank you Mr. Pulley, for your time. I'll undertake a motion.
Oh, just real quick, um, I believe it was Commissioner Cunningham, you asked about who's maintaining the open space along Redwood. My computer's being slow, I found, it, it does state in the plan that it is actually Alpine School District property, they will own and maintain, uh, the trail and landscaping around the trail.
Okay. I move to recommend approval of the Saratoga Springs Middle School Community Plan and Village Plan with the findings and conditions as stated in the, uh, planning staff packet. We have a motion from Commissioner Kilgore, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second from Commissioner Steele. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your time. Okay, we'll move on to item number six. This is continued item from January eleventh, two thousand eighteen, preliminary plat for Purrell Meadows located approximately seventy-three fifty north, ninety-four forty west. Larry Jacobson, or Silver Sage Financial is the applicant, and we'll turn the time over to Nora for the presentation.
Yep. Um, good evening. So you have seen this before in several forms. Um, this property was annexed to, um, into Saratoga Springs on November eighth, and the original application was actually made quite a few months before that and, um, there's, there's a, there's a long process that resulted in the annexation, including a protest by Lehigh, um, but that was all finished and done and it was in fact annexed and zoned, um, R-one-nine, so allowing nine thousand square foot lots, um, and this is the next step in the process, which is the preliminary plat. After the preliminary plat, um, they will go and do some final plats and probably two of them because the project is phased. Uh, this is, again, just reminding you of where this is in the grand scheme of things. The ones with, the one, the property with all the colors is McLaughlin, which has also been approved to be annexed but has not yet been annexed, we're still working on the development agreement, but we expect it to be annexed to Saratoga Springs. And then the little property to the right, um, that's labeled Webb Lake View, they actually are, have been, um, approved for annexation in Lehigh, so they will not be coming into the city. Um, and they will be asked to withdraw their application, um, with Saratoga City since they are going into Lehigh. Um, so, the site plan is very similar to the concept plan that we thought, that we saw through the, the zoning and annexation process, um, that already occurred. Uh, there are a hundred and twelve parcels, um, and then there are seven parcels that actually, um, will be annexed into Lehigh and, uh, Dave, I don't know if you can kinda show where those are. I tried to outline them in red, but for some reason when I transferred the file into the thing, it, the red went away, I don't know why. Um, yeah, the ones that are going into Lehigh are along Evans Drive, and then there's that weird little one on the right, that actually, while it's surrounded on three sides by, um, Saratoga Springs, it will actually be annexed into Lehigh because its access is off of that Evans Drive, um, which is a Lehigh road. And that's why it's configured that way, it does look kinda weird, but it makes the most sense because that is where the access point for that lot is. I just wanted to explain that, Sandra actually brought that up, um, and it's, I thought it was weird when I first saw it too, so. In terms of open space and amenities, um, they have a really thorough amenity package and, um, it includes two developed parks with picnic tables, pavilions, benches, those kinds of things, um, and then a connecting bridge over, over Dry Creek that connects the two sides of the subdivision, which is a significant amenity, as well as a paved trail along Dry Creek that will then hook into other trails. Um, and they want it to be paved so that, you know, neighbors and baby strollers and all those kinds of things can utilize the trail. Um, and they also are enhancing the landscaping along the Dry Creek corridor to make that a better experience. This is the landscape plan and the open space plan. Um, I also included in your packet the calculations and hopefully, you know, you had a chance to take a look at those, they're providing more than they need to, so they have more points than they absolutely have to have. And this is the project summary, which again is included in your packet. There are, all the lots are over nine thousand square feet, which is what's required, um, they have the amount of open space area they need, there's a little bit of sensitive lands, um, not a lot, it's basically kinda the bottom of Dry Creek. So that's what's proposed and, you know, you have options which are outlined in the staff report to forward a positive recommendation, a negative recommendation, or to continue a specific direction to staff. This does have to go through a final plat before it actually gets approved and there are some, there's still some engineering, um, things that need to be addressed and it's a possibility that their storm drainage, um, detention may reduce the number of lots by one or two, and they understand that, we've been working with them on that, um, and again, that will all have to be worked out before we get to final plat. Um, but we are asking for you to forward a positive recommendation to the city council now. Um, we have, Gordon and his folks have ongoing conversations with the engineer for this project and we expect those to continue and it's moving in a positive direction. So there's a recommendation for approval and then I have alternate motions for continuance or negative recommendation.
Thank you for your presentation, Senior Planner Shepherd. Is the applicant here?
They are.
Would you like to join us and please state your name and address for the record?
Larry Jacobson, ninety-five thirty-three South Seventh East in Sandy, and this is Scott, the engineer. He can probably answer questions better than I can, but I'll try.
Nice Scott and Larry. Did you want to add anything else to the presentation tonight? Okay, then this is a public hearing, so we will, actually, sorry, we've already closed the public hearing for this, so we'll open up to the planning commission.
Um, I was looking for on Exhibit B, there, it talked about showing what the score was for the open space amenities. Did we have a, 'cause it's not there. 'Cause when I looked, I was looking for something specifically for the score.
I can provide that to you.
I can provide that to you.
Okay.
I thought, I mean, I thought I combined all those documents into one, the worksheet and the plan, but apparently that...
Up above it, it referenced that, it would show that, the table for the complete score on Exhibit B, but you go down to Exhibit B, and it says total open space requirement, 10% of subdivision acreage minimum equivalent, open space acreage, anyway, but it doesn't, I was looking for...
The table.
Yes.
Yeah. I intended to include that, but I can certainly send it to you. We've gone over it a number of times.
It sounds like they have a lot of amenities. And that was one of the comments I wanted to make, is it looks, I really appreciate that you've incorporated the Dry Creek area in, and I think this will be a nice development for people to live in. And that's all the comments I had, thanks.
We do still need some details on some of those amenity structures, but that's, you know, that's part of the construction drawings and not necessarily part of the preliminary plat review.
Commissioner Kilgore.
Just wanted, or if I, so after we annex, or as far as the annexation goes, we won through, we won, and then now we're giving back, or was that...
With the Webb annexation, the one next year?
Yeah, yeah.
This annexation in particular, Parelly, is moving forward and has been annexed into the city of Saratoga Springs and recorded and all that, so it's all done. The project just to the east is the Webb Lake View annexation, and they have chosen to go into Lehigh. They've been, there've been some negotiations with Lehigh about zoning and entitlements and those kinds of things, and they have chosen to do that. It's kind of part of a bigger picture. Lehigh and Saratoga Springs have been working together to try to come up with agreement on annexation policy boundaries, and it's part of that discussion that there was some agreement, and interlocal agreement was entered into between the two councils that tries to give some resolution to what gets annexed to where. And so, part of that agreement was that the Lake View Webb property be annexed into Lehigh.
Okay, is that parcel A? Is that, is...
No.
Oh, so that's, parcel A is different then?
Yeah, it's a little piece that is, that Dave showed you.
That's, is that...
It's seven lots, it's on Evans Drive, and it's that seven lots plus that little funny corner one.
That's parcel A?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, because it talked about phase one, phase two, and then parcel A, and I didn't see a picture of parcel A or a mark out, but, okay, now it's clear. So we don't have to worry about that not being on there then. Okay. Oh, this might just be a typo, but staff report references under the condition and refers to an Exhibit D. Yeah, so under the first condition, Exhibit D, is there an Exhibit D?
Was it Exhibit C?
That's Exhibit C.
I didn't see.
Okay. I didn't see an Exhibit D, or maybe that's just a typo. It's a little nitpicky, but, yep. Executive summary says that, oh, yeah, the executive summary in the staff report says there's 42.46 acres, but the subdivision table shows 36.4 acres, as well as the city engineer's report, so I wonder what the difference is?
I'm going to let Scott address that and execute with the parcel A.
Okay.
The annexation is 42 point something acres. That included annexation of Saratoga Road, which previously was county, and so the city asked us to include that. So there's a long stripe of acreage that belongs to Saratoga Road as part of that, and then there's also the lots that are going to end up in Lehigh, fronting on Evans Street. So some of those are not part of the subdivision, hence the subdivision acreage is less.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Let's see, call it page 155. There's a, this, under the conditions, again, this time it's the, I think it's the, yeah, it's the engineer report, under the conditions, J, talks about needing to spell out additional engineering being performed. I was wondering, do we need to spell out what that, what that, do we need to, does the planning commission need to spell out what, quote, "additional engineering being performed" means? Or is that taken, is it already understood?
I believe it's already understood. It's a general statement. I don't think we need to go into the details.
Okay.
And preliminary plats, we often get information with preliminary plats that are actually what's really necessary for a final plat. So while we're often, we often are further along with the engineering, in this case, it will all have to be agreed to prior to any kind of final plat approval. And as I said, that our engineer and their engineer are working together daily on moving toward that.
Okay, terrific. It's an administrative thing, so that's why, just being a little bit specific. And then, there aren't any minimum setbacks, or like water, server, utilities, and things like that? Is that something that's going to come in the next phase, or is that something that's just doesn't, isn't required here?
What?
Like setbacks, minimum setbacks?
They are shown on the site plan, the minimum setbacks?
I mean...
I just showed them... See the site plan? Not shown on there?
How do we know if that's, 25 or 20 feet or...
I can't really see it from here. But the site plan and plat, the plat documents do include the building envelopes and setbacks. I don't know if it's the particular one I put in the presentation tonight, but the package of drawings doing, does include that.
Okay. Because I, yeah, I noticed in the checklist, it didn't really talk about whether the setbacks comply or not.
And they do. And they're also providing two car garages and then two parking spaces per...
And I guess there's water for... Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I mean, I just have one comment, I guess. And it, I guess I'm the third, second, maybe the third to just appreciation for the amenities and the open space you have in. It's refreshing. Too often we have to fight for, you know, just to have that meet code, and it is refreshing to see somebody to put in open space and amenities above code. And so I think it's going to contribute to a good environment for residents, and I hope this trend continues. I hope you're setting a precedent.
All I have is a ditto for that. We do appreciate you.
I do have just one question. So what is the difference between the limited access detention basin and the detention area slash play field? Is it a depth difference, or what makes those two, why is one limited access and one is a play area?
Right, so size, and turf, and location, depth, and slope, all of those things fall into, the one that's right in the center is much easier to play in and use for more things. Small ones around the perimeter are a little harder to use, so we didn't take credit for them as anything more than just limited.
Okay, that's kind of what I was asking. Will it be fenced off or anything? When you say limited access, does it mean it's difficult to access, or we won't want anyone accessing it?
It doesn't really have other purposes besides the detention, so we didn't take the points in your system for...
The limited access is a, it's a defined thing in our open space calculations, and it has to do with the amount that you get to count for the open space course. So it, you know, they're only, they're not allowed to count that.
Because it's limited access. Okay.
The kids could still use it as a sled, like a sledding area and stuff like that. It's open for that, right?
The issue really was about the points in your spreadsheet.
Right, right.
We had plenty of points, we needed to get any more, so we didn't ask for credit.
Scrounging for points in detention areas. That's all for me.
Okay, we'd like to, well, we're not the ones who make the actual decision, but we'd like to welcome you to the city, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move to forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the Parel Meadows preliminary plat, subject to the following findings and conditions, with the change on condition one, that the engineer's condition are in Exhibit C rather than D.
We have a motion from Commissioner Steele. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm going to judge that one with Commissioner Brush because she's new.
Thank you.
Do we have a question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
You.
Thank you. Do we need a break, or couldn't we push through?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.